Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Rockingham County School Board meeting. We appreciate your attendance here this evening. Mr. Falk is unable to join us this evening. First order of business is for us to approve the agenda for this evening. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lord. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion board members regarding the agenda? All those -- I'm not in the electronic mode. Please vote electronically. For those of you who have not been to a school board meeting in the past, we vote electronically, and all the votes will show up there on the panel on the side of the room. The agenda passes unanimously, four zero. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. We'll take a moment of silence. Thank you. Mr. Baker, I think we're going to move into recognition and presentations. One of the reasons that the board, before the winter break, made a decision to come back into the schools was for our recognitions and presentations. We hadn't done them in some time, so we have quite a few this evening to celebrate, and Mr. Baker, I think, is going to start us off.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. Chair Reed, members of the board, Dr. Scheichel, and other guests, I welcome you to J. Frank Hilliard Middle School. As I looked back at presentations from previous years, I noticed that nearly all of them had a photo of the school in the title page. While we are very proud of our building and work with diligence to make it look nice and function well for our community, the building is not what makes the school. Our staff and students make JFHMS a great place. So I started tonight with a photo collage. This photo collage helps to capture the happiness and the spirit of our school. Granted, these are snow day photos, which may jade that just a little bit. These are submitted by students online, but you will see a bit later in the program that the smiles visible despite the mask are plentiful within these walls. Again, I welcome you to JFHMS. I trust that even in this later hour this evening, you can feel the energy of our hawks as they soar. I always like to start with some thank yous. I want to share a few words of thanks this evening. I don't get this public opportunity a lot. In fact, it's been two years since we were able to host a board meeting here, so I'm glad to have this opportunity, and I want to make a few remarks here of thanks. First, I want to share a very broad but a very personal thank you to our U.S. veterans. Tomorrow, as some of you may know, is February 23rd, and that marks the anniversary of the raising of the U.S. flag on Mount Suribachi in Iwo Jima. That is a defining moment in U.S. history and also a very special moment for the United States Marine Corps. That's significant to me right now because, within the past month, my family has lost two beloved members, two brothers of my dad, actually, my uncles Buster and Jerry, each of which were in the United States Marine Corps. Thank you for your service, Buster and Jerry, and for the years of memories that you leave to us. My thoughts and prayers continue for the immediate families and our extended family. I also want to extend a special thank you to our school board and members of our division leadership. Nothing that you see in the next ten minutes or so in the school presentation would be possible without your leadership and your commitment. I thank each of you for your role in making this school year the best that we could imagine, given the circumstances. I also thank our custodial staff led by Tina Kaplinger. There's not a better crew around. They work tirelessly, they work without complaint, and they always have the school looking excellent. This year especially, it is hard to ignore their importance. Our school is safe in large part due to their diligence in cleaning and sanitizing. I thank Assistant Principals Amy Wooters and Brett Martin. Probably -- y'all, here they are. They're not hiding on me just yet. Their work to prepare and execute our plan for this school year has been outstanding. I'm blessed to have these two beside me each day. Kathy Brown, our musical director or band director, assists with the setup and sound for our programs in here, and also Kevin Perkins came in today and helped us with the final touches and some of the finer points of trying to broadcast this meeting. So thank you, Kevin, for helping out with that. And a special thank you tonight, again because I had the forum to do so, a special thank you to our JFHMS staff. They have been unbelievable this year. No way we could have done a better job navigating a very challenging time in a dynamic year. They do that with a positive outlook, they keep the focus on kids, and I just can't ask for more out of them. So I really appreciate our staff and what they have done for us here. We want to move into some recognitions, and we'll begin that part of our program with recognizing the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Council Award winners. Mr. Martin and Ms. Wooters will now introduce you to two special JFHMS students. Mr. Martin, you're up first.
Good evening, members of the board. Dr. Scheichel, welcome. I would like to begin this afternoon by recognizing Caleb Wyant as our Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Council Award winner. So Caleb, if you could, please kind of join me here at the podium. Take your time. You'll see Caleb has had lots of adventures here lately. Mr. and Mrs. Wyant, if you wouldn't mind standing so you can be a part of this, be proud of what Caleb has accomplished. Since last March, our school has been very challenging in many ways. Some students have worked especially diligently to excel despite the obstacles and novelty of the situation. Caleb is one such student. His seventh grade history teacher, Mr. Rulison, noted that Caleb threw himself into his work. That didn't happen at this, but threw himself into his work, especially the virtual work from the spring. He did everything to high level of quality, where as a teacher, I could really tell he was taking it seriously and working hard to learn on his own. He is noted by other teachers to be a hardworking and caring student who strives to do his best on all of his assignments, which noting how the spring went for a lot of our students was very admirable. So good job, Caleb. I know that Caleb's seventh grade teachers recalled his interest in learning, his dependability in asking questions, and searching for ways to apply what he was learning. Caleb is described as "an exceptional young man," that's in quotes, who with a kind and caring personality gets along easily with everyone. He is a great friend, an excellent group mate in class assignments, and a great teammate. So you can see a lot of his teachers had a lot of great things to say about you, Caleb. This year, as an eighth grader, Caleb was a member of our eighth grade basketball team, which this is part of, so. His coach, Mrs. Bill Meyer, describes Caleb as "a pleasure to coach," especially noting his work ethic and positive attitude. She said that Caleb was always inquiring how to become better at the game of basketball. So Caleb, on behalf of all of us at J. Frank Hilliard, thank you. Well done.
I have a presentation. Can you guys hear me? Okay. First, let's applaud Caleb's parents because we know that true character starts at home. And Caleb, I just want to say that Brittany Lamb is actually very close and very special to Mr. Breeden, and as a former 4-H member, Kelly Coggsdale, oh my goodness, Kelly Coggsdale was very special to me. So this award is very special, and character is very important to everybody up here. And we just want to thank you for expressing character and being such a wonderful student in this wonderful community. Okay, so these are your parents. Do you have any other people here tonight? Okay, and what are your parents' names? Carissa and EJ? So again, let's give Caleb and his family a -- I also have, like I said, characters close to our hearts, so we have a pin for you to wear close to your heart. We have a certificate for you to hang on your wall because, just like we're proud of you, I hope you and your family are proud of you. It's quite an accomplishment, especially at J. Frank Hilliard. There's some wonderful kids here. And then finally, we have something sweet for you, a certificate to Klein's Dairy Bar. So I hope you enjoy it. Let me carry it back for you. Okay.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here this evening. I get the honor of recognizing our second award winner. Claire Mathias is our second student to be recognized as the Brittany Lamb-Kelly Coggsdale Character Accounts Award winner. Claire, would you please join me at the podium, and I would ask your parents to stand as we introduce you. In 1992, Tina Turner released a song titled "The Best," known more popularly as simply "The Best." Some of you may remember that tune. In the process of soliciting comments from teachers, Mr. Welsh, one of Claire's agriculture teachers, described her as being "the best." The appointed superlative may seem weighty, but Mr. Welsh supported his claim in a most articulate fashion, describing Claire's diligent work, commitment to helping the team, and her leadership in the school's FFA chapter. Mr. Welsh also noted that Claire is open to try new experiences and puts in the effort to excel at them. In support of her strong character, Mr. Welsh notes that Claire raises hogs to show at the county fair in her spare time, adding that there is no greater qualification for good character than to dedicate your time to caring for swine. Claire's teachers comment repeatedly about her caring and thoughtful approach to her classmates and teachers. She is a strong collaborator, providing leadership within the various groups that she works with, but also showing a willingness to be a follower when the situation demands. Claire's positive and kind attitude impacts her classes in a positive way. One teacher in particular noting that she brought a lot of class discussions through her thoughtfulness and kindness. Thank you, Claire, for giving all your best all the time.
Hey, Claire. I'm so excited for Claire to be here tonight because I know Claire. I'm so hugging you. I wish we could just hug. Claire is one of my former 4Hers, and I've worked with her through FFA. And many of you guys I sure don't remember, but one of the last students we had at our school board meeting was Claire because she was giving an Inspire Award. And I'm telling you, the girl has grown a foot, and I barely recognize her under this mask, but I know she still has the same great character that she's always had, and I'm so super proud of you. And we have the recognition for you as well. And, oh, your parents are here. I know you have another person. Would you like to tell us who it is?
My sister.
It's her sister, Chloe, and her parents Chad and Missy. So let's give them a big hand, too. And let's have one final hand for Claire.
Back to me now, and I would like to recognize our Volunteer of the Year for 2021, and this is unique. JW and Jean, will you join me up here, please? I'll say this is unique because we don't always recognize a husband and wife team, but that's what we have. Our volunteer selection this year is the Dynamic Duo, as we'll call them. We consider them, this is a package deal, since you will rarely see one without the other, especially when they're working here at Hilliard. JW and Jean Fisk have been assisting with our musical productions for several years and have become a vital part of our musical production team. Jean assists in any way she can, doing lots of little jobs, working behind the scenes with costumes, makeup, and hair, helping students manage their nerves a little bit and getting the best out of them that we can for our performance on stage. And she also is a regular substitute here at Hilliard, building relationships with students on a regular basis. JW is a master carpenter. He is the master carpenter behind our set crew, designing and building the majority of the fantastic sets, backdrops, and props that JFH has become known for in our stage productions. JW also oversees the backstage crew during the shows, allowing students to act independently while also trying to help them when they need it with microphoned and sound issues as the need arises. JW and Jean give of their time almost daily during musical season, graciously sharing their past theater experiences and expertise with us. The Fisk have helped our young theater program to flourish, leaving a lasting impact on all who they have worked with. So we certainly do thank you for your work with the students of J. Frank Hilliard Middle School.
On behalf of the board, I would like to thank you as well. I'd also like to say, it makes me a little sad because we're not having, we should be having musical right now. This should be filled. And last year, guys, if you missed it last year, the sets were awesome. And if you knew the school, you could pick up some really fun, interesting facts, or cues, if you will, that were within the, in the sets. It was awesome, and I enjoyed it so much. So hopefully, very soon, we'll be able to do that again. But I do want to, in the meantime, we have a certificate for you all, and also a gift certificate to Klein's. You'll have to share it. Let's give them another round of applause.
If you see me struggling a little bit up here, there's a quandary, right? Those of us who only have to wear reading glasses and don't get used to reading glasses, wearing them all the time. I'm fogging up, and then I take them off, and then I can't see. I did a little bit bigger print on my comments, and it's still not working, so bear with me here as I kind of struggle through this and figure out what's going to work best. I can't see through the fog right now. I'm struggling. But congratulations to Caleb, Claire, and Mr. and Ms. Fisk. We thank you for everything you do for us. And it's always interesting with students because they're here so briefly, and the three years that they're here at middle school just go so quickly, and they have these growth spurs like we saw with Claire, and it's just incredible how much they grow in just three short years, and then they're gone off to the high school for great things there, too. So thank you all for what you do for us. For our program this evening, I want to go back and just kind of set the stage a little bit. As I worked on this, I was thinking about, man, and I've talked to staff about this, too, is we're doing something that a lot of people haven't been able to do, and we're doing some things that some people said was even impossible. So I want to show you that tonight and show you what that looks like. Not everybody gets to see what I see every day, so I want you to see it. For weeks following the statewide school closure on March 13th last year, a sense of complete uncertainty weighed heavily on most of us. My role, I found primarily in that time to be one of reassuring others and providing emotional support. If you know me, you know that is not a natural role for me, but it was, it is one that was necessary at the time. We moved into April and May, and that presented even more challenges. Those challenges of access and equity and placing, that placed us all in a very uncomfortable position, and we just had to figure out what we could do in that short time period as best we could. The summer of unknowns, as I will name it, led to much planning, unplanning, and replanning. As we, the Hilliard administrative team, met over the summer, it became clear that flexibility and creativity would be very necessary and would define our year. An alliterative idea that I had early in 2019 came thundering back in my mind, and we ended up adopting that as our phrase for the year. The JFHMSS staff has heard this phrase repeatedly since July, and you see it on your screen now. We are resilient. We are resourceful, and we are relentless. So I'm going to give you some evidence tonight of us being all three of us. Those first timid steps to return to learning, lessons learned from the spring experiences were going to be very valuable to us in plotting our way forward. But we knew that we had to find a path to success. As part of our fall professional learning efforts, this question was posed to staff members. ... activity with this photo. This is not, Mr. Martin, my kids. He looked at that earlier, and he said, "Man, Mackenzie's really changing." Yes, she has, because that's not her. So these are not my kids, but this is a photo I found of what it might look like in some of our homes. This photo does not represent all of our homes. It does represent a lot of our homes, and this is what it might look like for them. And it was really interesting to read teachers' observations, and I even, I wanted them to even suppose some things. So their suppositions were powerful as well. And we took that and had good discussions about that, and they picked up on all the little things, like the girl with her cellphone, but the cellphone's turned over while she's doing her work. Good call. The boy's playing a game while he does class, right? Some of you in here have done that, I know, but you don't have to put your hands up right now. I know how that works. But it was just... Imagine that environment for our students outside of their time with us has been critical to our success. And of course, we know now that challenge is magnified because the time they spend away from us right now is much more than the time they spend with us. Here's just a little bit of what that looked like. Saw a few there. I'm not sure. The start of school on September 10th was awkward, very different, and counterintuitive in many ways, but we did it. It took a while to settle into this new school arrangement. We tried as best we could to enjoy some of the activities that boost our spirits and make us smile. We scheduled a camo day, celebrated Unity Day. We shared our civic duty with students in a neat kind of way there. And as Mr. Han shows here, if you know Mr. Han, you know he is a Cowboys fan. So Mr. Han shows here that we even honored some silly sports wagers about some games earlier this year, just to try to have a little fun. Teachers were relentless in trying to engage students in learning and return to something much closer to what we might consider normal school. Before the weather made this an insurmountable challenge in many ways, some classes... ... that day. So well done. That was a fun activity, and we did that very early on, actually, as you can tell. This, but we did some cool things, but this is how it looked most of that first nine weeks, right? The first nine weeks of school. Teachers were as creative as they could be, learning to leverage Schoology and Zoom and leading learning activities. Barriers existed for some students and their families, and we were trying to identify those and work through those. We knew, regardless of what else we did, we had to find a way to increase student engagement. And these aren't the best captures there, but you can see in the one photo there that you just see a name on a screen. And by and large, that's what teachers saw. They saw names on screens. They did not see a lot of faces. You see my face in there because I popped into the Zoom meeting so I could capture that and get some comments on that, but we really had trouble seeing students. So we wanted to do things a little differently. In an effort to coax reluctant students to turn on mics and cameras and participate in class, we tried to bring your pet to Zoom Day, and this was very successful, proved very popular, and in fact, we came back and did that a couple of other times over the course of the next few weeks. And that one thing, probably more than anything else, began to break down those walls of privacy and began to increase the interaction between students and teachers. In November, we then transitioned to hybrid learning, with most of our students returning to classes at least two days a week. Teachers continuing to show their resiliency explored ways to return to more traditional learning activities with the appropriate mitigation efforts, of course, in an effort to fully engage students with the curriculum. And you see a couple of examples of some of those activities here. Resourceful planning helped to create hands-on learning experiences and meaningful learning activities. Many still remained concerned that learning had become impersonal, inadequate, and ineffective. Our observational evidence shows that to be the exception much more than the rule. Here, you clearly see students engaged with learning despite the notable obstacles. In this way, our students become our models for what it means to be resilient. And PE, what about PE? Even PE, an entirely different construct in a COVID world, was modified effectively. Pogo sticks in the classroom, a focus on individual fitness, and selection of games that can be spaced where just a few of the modifications that are resourceful teachers chose to help kids stay active. In December, our students spread holiday cheer by creating and sending handcrafted cards and drawings to residents at Life Care Center in Newmarket. This demonstrated that we had not become disengaged with our greater community despite the limitations of school. As the urgencies of adjusting to teaching in a virtual and blended learning environments have eased, JFHMSS again is showing a relentless pursuit of literacy for all students. We want all students to be confident in reading and writing and navigating each content area. An ongoing social media campaign to promote literacy continues through Facebook and Instagram. Recently, we shared this activity with students where teachers took shelfies of themselves, showing our reading selections and celebrating our love of reading. If anybody needs a good reading list, I can show you some good stuff. You may or may not like it, but it's good stuff. But we had a lot of fun with that. A new publication we started this year, Our Words on the Street, has been a hit with many students. Each publication includes short articles, book recommendations, and fun activities for families. We have also maintained a few, not as much as we would like, but a few of our fused classes, and several teachers have worked collaboratively to design and implement integrated units of study despite the obvious challenges. Virtual remediation sessions ensure that any student, regardless of their schedule or track, is able to receive individual and small group assistance in reading. In April, we are planning a reading incentive program titled Spring Into Reading Olympics, and that will debut, as I said, actually, I said in April. It's going to, I think, be out just at the end of March. One of our newest initiatives also, let me go back here a minute. Yeah, there it is, at the bottom there. One of our newest initiatives and one that I am most excited about is the creation of a literacy task force. This is part of a more comprehensive three-year plan for academic recovery. Ms. Wooters is going to lead that group for us, and we seek there to just bring in fresh ideas, some fresh faces, some new ways to tackle broad-based literacy skills, and we're really excited. we're really excited about that. There is so much more I could say about Hilliard and about what makes this a special place. I get excited, and therefore, a little long-winded when I do this, talking about the wonderful people of this community and the dedicated teachers that serve them so well. I trust that this short presentation serves to reassure you that your efforts do make a difference and that we are all working diligently to provide meaningful learning experiences for our students. I invite you to come see us in action anytime. Thank you very much again for being here this evening, and I will turn the program over to you guys, and we'll pursue the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Baker, for sharing that information regarding J. Frank Hilliard and all that your staff is doing and your teachers for our students. I was very interested to see about the fusion and the integrative that we're still able to do that even in these times when teaching is a little bit more challenging. Your presentation sort of really dovetails into the next part of our agenda, which is our Inspire Awards. These awards were created to honor our teachers in Rockingham County, and I believe this is the first meeting in some time that we've been able to make those awards. And along with the certificate is also, each one of the awardees receives a gift card that has been generously donated by the Rockingham Educational Foundation. So, the first person that's gonna make a presentation today is Alyssa Shank, and she's gonna be presenting to Bridget Crawford. I'd ask both of them to come down.
I am Alyssa Shank. I am Alyssa Shank, and I'm a former student of Ms. Crawford. And when I saw that I could nominate a teacher for the Inspire Award, I knew right away that I should nominate Ms. Crawford. And I believe Ms. Crawford should win this award because she has been one of my biggest inspirations ever since I was in her sixth grade English class. She inspired me to do my best every day, whether it's academically or physically. I can guarantee that all my classmates can say the same. She believed in me when I didn't, and she challenged me, and she still had faith that I could do it. Ms. Crawford was more than just a teacher, but she was a friend. Even though I'm not in her class anymore, she still continues to be one of my biggest supporters. My dad was diagnosed with cancer in October for the third time in 12 years, and she supported me through it all, thick and thin. She taught me how to be a better person and how to love everyone no matter what. One morning, she emailed me and telling me to stay positive, and she said, "Life is a series of tiny, of many, many tiny miracles." That was one of the biggest and most valuable lessons she has ever taught me. I am so very thankful for Ms. Crawford and the love she has shown me over the past two years.
Alyssa, thank you for sharing your time this evening. We appreciate it and coming down here. And Ms. Crawford, congratulations. Thank you for all you do for the children of Rockingham County. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation is Faith Jones, who's presenting to Martha Maddox.
So, Mrs. Maddox has been my art teacher throughout my high school career, and as you can imagine, AP Art online is just the hardest thing ever, holding your pictures up to the camera. I mean, she, she went through it all with us, though, and we worked out all the little kinks in that system, but, and it was a great experience. So, I've had Mrs. Maddox for my teacher in multiple art classes and in a club I'm involved in called NAHS. No matter what the day holds, she always welcomed us into her class with a warm smile and just the purest joy. Walking into her classroom after a long day was just a breath of fresh air from all the stress and everything else. I knew that there would hold laughs and smiles, and they'd always be shared throughout the students in her classroom and everybody else that was in there with her. She always does her absolute best to care for each and every student, no matter what their circumstances, and she wants everybody to learn, no matter what their skill level is, which is something that I just respect so much. She has earned, she has earned my highest respects very early on when I realized how inspiring she is, not only as a teacher, but as a person as well.
Faith, thank you for being here this evening. We appreciate it and sharing your thoughts regarding Ms. Maddox. Ms. Maddox, thank you for inspiring creativity in our students and for all that you do for the students of Rockingham County. We appreciate it. This is an example of just two of the hundreds of teachers that we have in Rockingham County and the work that they're doing every day in some very difficult, challenging times. I encourage everyone in our community to continue to fill out the form, to nominate teachers, to inspire awards. Just think if everyone in this room filled out a form, the next month would be filled with teachers to come down here and be praised and recognized and acknowledged and receive a token of our appreciation. So, I challenge all of you to look in the schools that your childrens attend and the schools in our communities and recognize teachers. The link, I believe, is on the Rockingham County website, but you can also contact Dr. Scheichel's office. I believe Ms. Bocock can help you also identify that link if you want to nominate a teacher. Thank you. Next up is Ms. Stone.
Good evening, Dr. Scheichel, Chairman Reed, and school board members. I'm honored to be here tonight to celebrate two amazing teachers who inspire me so many times, whether it's from attending a gardening meeting on what to do next in the outdoor classroom area or composting. I'll often meet with these two people or in a group, and they will take it and run with it in 200 different directions and make it even better than we ever even talked about. So, they inspire me every day, and they have, because of that, been honored on a state level. So, the first recognition is the Virginia Soil and Water Conservation Teacher of the Year for 2020, 2021, and that is from everywhere in the state. We have two award winners, both this year's and last year's award winner with us tonight, and that is Laura Henry for this year and Phil Sotoli for last year. So, I'm gonna ask them both to come up so that I can present these awards with them. And then Phil, so he won the 2019, 2020 Virginia Soil and Conservation Teacher of the Year Award, but he also won this year's 2020, 2021 State Level Ag in the Classroom Teacher of the Year Award for their lessons. I would encourage school board members, community members, if you would like to see things in action. They are growing vegetables. They are composting excess food. They are eating those vegetables in and having kids taste test and do experiments, and it is so inspiring to see all that they do. So, I'm so honored that they're awarded by the state level that won these awards, but I'm honored that our children get to experience these experiences with them. And so, I very much congratulate them and appreciate them so much. And in fact, I've even had a couple of organizations reach out recently and ask if there was a possibility they could come and tour Lacy Springs Elementary so that they could see what all's going on there. And the beautiful thing is, they don't stop there. They have even more plans and things that they want to do. And it's awesome because they just create an image of what, what can we do to make it even better? That's what they go about with every single day. And so, I'm honored to work with both of these. I learned so much from both of them in so many ways. So, thank you very much, both of you. [Applause] Laura, I have a couple little books here for you. This one's for you, Laura. Got them a couple environmental science books. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Mr. Sotoli and Ms. Henry. Thank you for all you do. Ms. Stone, thank you for making those recognitions. Next up is Dr. Scheichel for the Protect Your Community Mask Contest winners.
Members of the school board and the public, as part of our collaboration with an organization that represents a number of organizations in the community called Be Vigilant for the Valley, you can see the organization set up part of this. It's both Rockingham County and the city of Harrisonburg, including all the universities, both of the governing agencies, the school divisions, the community college, Centerra RMH. We decided as a group, as this Vigilant for the Valley group, to sponsor a mask design contest. So, both Harrisonburg City Schools and Rockingham County Schools decided to give students an opportunity to design a face covering for our students. And through this organization, we determined, you know, what the specification should be, when they would be turned in, and we received over 100 different designs from students. They were then given to a local group of artists, so the school division had really no say in the final winners, so that was done by a group of artists, both for city schools and for the county schools. And at the last meeting of the group, the winners were announced. And so, tonight, it's my privilege to show you the designs and then also to recognize the winners. And so, the first, we decided to have a design for each school level, so elementary, middle and high school. And not only will the winners be recognized tonight, but every student and teacher at the elementary school level will receive one of the masks designed by that student, the same, of course, at the middle and the high school. So, the elementary school winner is Olivia Amy. She's a fourth grader at Riverbend Elementary School, and unfortunately, Olivia was not able to attend the meeting tonight. And so, again, you can see her design here. At the middle school level, and the artists, you know, that are here, they will recognize that this doesn't look exactly how they drew it. There's a reason for that. When you print the masks, there's a limit on how many colors we can put on it. And so, they had it just redesigned for the same message, and it comes close. In most cases, it's almost exact. The high school one, you really can't distinguish, but the artists may say, "Oh, that's, I drew that rainbow a little bit differently," but that's just the way that the printer requires this. So, if Ella Beagle, Hilliard sixth grader, would come up to be recognized, and David Baker could come up here too, to be here with Ella for that recognition. So, Ella, congratulations. Thanks for the wonderful design that you provided to us, and congratulations for winning the contest. And again, every middle school student across the county will receive a mask with your design on it. So, here's a certificate for you, and then, of course, you will recognize your design on lots of, and lots of faces once we receive those masks. So, congratulations. And then, at the high school level, we have Ava Florrie from Turner Ashby High School, an 11th grader who incorporated the colors of the four high schools into the design. So, if Ava could come up and Mr. Judd as well to be recognized. Well-designed mask, and again, this, yours was selected by a group of local artists, and we will again distribute one of the masks to each student and staff member at the high school level. So, again, it shows that unity among the four high schools when it comes to protecting the community. And so, again, it's a great design, and thank you for participating and caring about the community in this way as well. So, congratulations.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Congratulations to our students who are the winners, and many thanks and appreciation to those partners in the community who collaborated on this project. Okay, the next is public comments. We are going to begin that program. We have two people signed up. Before that, I want to make a few brief comments. In my role as chair of the Rockingham County School Board, over the course of the past four days, board members, including myself, have regrettably received many calls, emails, inquiries from concerned parents, community members, and stakeholders regarding the recent social media activity of a board member. We heard from individuals who were deeply disturbed by the information that a board member shared on his personal social media page. We have also heard from others who support the board member for his nearly 18-year commitment to our board and the education of the children in our community. We recognize that board members may have their own personal social media network on which they share their own personal beliefs, views, and information. Members of the community who disagree with information shared by a board member on their personal page may always contact that board member directly to seek clarification or to discuss their concerns. What individual board members share or post on their personal accounts is not reflective of the values, mission, and beliefs of the Rockingham County School Board. Please allow me to reaffirm that our school board is committed to Rockingham County schools, meaning we embrace relationships, community, purposeful learning, and scholarship. These principles drive the board's deliberations and decisions so that we continue to take action in the best interest of our students, our teachers and staff, and our schools. As we begin public comment this evening, I would also like to offer you a reminder that we designate this time for the board to hear information and perspective from our community. While board members do not engage in a question-and-answer period, we are here to listen. After the meeting adjourns this evening, Mr. Breeden has offered to remain available to speak with community members who may want to share additional thoughts or concerns regarding this matter. I call your attention to the policies that we use for public comment, which were available at the table upon entry, and I'll highlight a few things before we begin. In the interest of respecting everyone's time and allowing the board to address the numerous other agenda items during this evening's meeting, including another student presentation, I ask that you be mindful of the public comment time and avoid repetition of the same information so that others will have the opportunity to present additional or different views. Speakers are limited to three minutes and should address the board as a whole in a polite, courteous manner. We appreciate you taking the opportunity to speak before the board tonight. So, we're gonna begin public comments, and the first person that is signed up is Mary Beth Landis. Ask Ms. Landis to step down to the podium. Ms. Landis, did I get your first name correct? Okay, thank you.
School board members and Dr. Scheichel, while I appreciate your opening words, I do still feel like a comment needs to be said, and I have come to you this evening for two main reasons. One was over the concern of the recent remarks of Lowell Folk regarding Rush Limbaugh's death, but also to request the reopening of schools with students having the option to return full-time, five days per week, in person. I will keep my... I will keep my concerns and notes in regards to Mr. Folk's comments short, but I did want to call attention to them because it reminded me of the Rockingham County Public Schools' code of conduct, and because our students, of which I have two, in the school system are required to sign those annually at the beginning of the school year. The code of conduct, in part, that all students sign, states that students will demonstrate a caring attitude toward all individuals by doing the following, and this is taken verbatim from the handbook. Number one, I will demonstrate an attitude that everyone is an individual of worth. Number two, I will listen to the opinions of others, recognizing that they may be different than my own. And number three, I will promote and participate in programs of service and act to help others. All of you, as elected school board members, should exemplify what we want our students to become by conducting yourself with these same expectations. And I think that a level of precedent should be set with most of Folk's remarks in expecting that we should set the precedent that we expect our students to follow, especially in this school system. In regards to the reopening of schools, it has been almost one year since schools first closed. You all, as school board members and those in charge of instruction, have had ample time to prepare for both virtual learning and now in-person learning. I work in a hospital setting, and I'm proud to say that our leadership team and board members planned and implemented what was required to take care of our patients during this pandemic and continue to do so with the planning and staffing of vaccination clinics. I would have expected for you all to do the same for the learning of the students of Rockingham County Public Schools, but unfortunately, I have seen below-average work. And I appreciate everything that was presented here and the work that is being done, but as a parent, I am telling you, this is not enough. And I speak of students, to students, who make high grades, but their teachers are even telling them that there is no way they can teach the material that would normally be covered, which is very concerning for students that are preparing especially to go beyond high school into the workforce or onto college. In terms of, and while I can tell you, at this point, my children are in school two days a week, and on the three asynchronous learning days, they have, on average, less than one hour of work to complete, which is unacceptable to achieving and providing a quality education to them. In terms of health consequences, the CDC has stated that in-person learning in schools has not been associated with substantial community transmission of COVID-19, and school reopenings do not appear to predate increases in community transmission of COVID-19. From a mental health standpoint, a study in pediatrics recently concluded that significantly higher rates of suicide-related behaviors appear to have corresponded with times when COVID-19 stressors and community responses, such as stay-at-home orders and school closures, were heightened. Teachers that desire the vaccination will have been vaccinated, and I feel like it's in the best interest of our students' physical, mental, and emotional well-being to return to school in person five days per week at the beginning of the final nine weeks of this semester. And as a teacher, and as a tax, or sorry, as a parent and as a taxpaying citizen, this is my expectation from Rockingham County Public Schools. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Landis, thank you for speaking in front of the board. We appreciate it. Next speaker is Matt Cross.
Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I've only got three minutes, and so I have written everything down. I am a preacher, so when you get a preacher with a mic in his hand, they go a little long. So I did, I was hoping to confront Mr. Lowell Folk here tonight for his comments that he made on social media. And so I'm here to address him and also the board tonight. Sorry, I got a text coming in. I want the board to know, I wrote this down so I can go faster, okay? I want the board to know that I have found my soul, and I want to express it tonight. Mr. Folk, you stated on your Facebook page, and I quote, "I hope that conservatives and the GOP are able to examine self and find their soul after the death of Rush Limbaugh. I give him no grace at all. He was an evil piece of infection." Mr. Folk, let me share with you what conservatism is. Conservatism is a commitment to traditional values and ideas, values like marriage being instituted by God between a man and a woman, values that our founding fathers framed in our Declaration of Independence when they wrote, "We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they were endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among them are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness." Conservatives believe in free enterprise, private ownership, and the right to bear arms. Mr. Folk, if fighting for the unborn is infectious, please consider me the most infected person you've ever met of conservatism. I am pro-life. If my beliefs for an American First Agenda is offensive, I'm not sorry. If I offend you by standing with law enforcement and not wanting to defund police, I am not sorry. If standing with Israel is offensive to you, I am not sorry. If believing that we should be energy-independent is offensive, I am not sorry. If standing for the American farmer who feed America by not taxing them to death, I am not sorry. Mr. Folk, we have found our soul, we believe in God, and we love our country. We are patriotic, we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, we remove our hats and we place our hands over our hearts. We're tired of seeing our history being erased, monuments being torn down, and the renaming of our schools. Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it. For example, the renaming of Turner Ashby High School. In almost 40 years in living in the Shenandoah Valley, and 30 years in Rockingham County, never once in my personal or professional career was Turner Ashby ever a topic of conversation other than it being one of our local high schools. But the majority, not all, but majority of this board and our superintendent will not stand up to the counterculture of our day. And soon, Turner Ashby High School will be a thing of the past. I understand it takes courage to stand when the culture is bowing. History tells us of three Hebrew children who were confronted to bow, but their conscience would not allow them. God met those Hebrew children in the furnace of affliction, and God will meet us there if we choose to stand against His ungodly counterculture. Mr. Folk, I didn't sign the petition for your removal that of this morning had over 1,000 signatures. I do not desire that you be removed from your seat on the school board. As a conservative, I believe in the First Amendment and the protection of free speech. And I want you to know that I forgive you for what you have said about me and my family who are conservatives, but first, we are Christians before our political party. Instead, I want to thank you, Mr. Folk, for telling us the truth on how you really feel. You have awakened the conservative Christian base in Rockingham County and have moved us to action. Our voices will no longer be silent when it comes to this board, and we will be heard. God bless you, Mr. Folk. May God, our Creator and Savior, through Jesus Christ, bless you and keep you. The Lord make His face shine on you and be gracious to you. The Lord turn His face towards you and give you peace. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
Mr. Cross, thank you for sharing those words with us. We appreciate it. That concludes the public comments section of our meeting this evening. We will move into board member comments. We'll start with Mr. Breeden.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. Thank you, Mr. Baker, and staff for having me here. Thank you for the Hawks mask. I proudly wear green tonight. Mrs. Shiflett, if you don't have one, we'll hook you up. I know how proudly you wear the green. So thank you all for hosting us and glad to be here.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Ms. Lorr?
First, I would like to wish everyone a happy National FFA Week. That's why I'm wearing my lovely blue and gold tonight, and even though I just took it off, I have my FFA mask. So happy FFA Week, and I think we'll be hearing a little bit more about that later. I also wanted to celebrate some students tonight, and I'm going to have to put on my glasses to do that, participating in the state wrestling tournament over the weekend from Turner Ashby were John Bowman, Trent Hill, and Patrick Sullivan. And then Spotswood had two fifth places at the state wrestling match, Matthew Ford and Grayson Lamb. And then Broadway had some folks get on the podium as well. Garrett Moyer's placed sixth, Jackson Wells placed third, and Reed Garrison had a second-place finish at state this week. And I would really like to congratulate each of those students, and maybe just a special little shout-out to Reed Garrison, as I know him personally, and he's just got the greatest smile, and he's a wonderful kid. But congratulations to every single one of them. Also, the Spotswood High School girls' basketball team and the East Rock boys' basketball team both had second-place finishes at state in the past week. So we'd definitely like to congratulate them. And I'd just like to say to every student athlete right now, thank you for your perseverance, thank you for your dedication to your sport and your school. We know it's not easy right now, and we appreciate you, and congratulations for everything you've been doing. Also, the Turner Ashby musical will be this week, and there's information online about how to watch it. So we finally have some good stuff, well, we've had good stuff happening, but some really awesome musicals coming down the pike, so I'm very excited about that. And I think that is all I have. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Lorr. Dr. McQuilkin.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Reed. I was going to mention the sports, but I believe that you took care of that. I'm glad that we're back to recognizing the students and the volunteers with the character counts and the Inspire Awards and the awards that our teachers and students may have for which they have been recognized. And it's just nice to be back into school again. Thank you. Thank you very much for the welcoming that we've had, and we look forward to all the schools that we're going to be in and to recognize everybody who's participating in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Dr. Scheichel?
Yeah, congratulations to all the athletes and also those students recognized here tonight. For me, the highlight is always coming to this building. In 1995, I was a student teacher here, and then I had the privilege to teach here for two and a half years before we moved the school over to the new building. And so there are other people in the room who were here at the time, you know, Martha Maddox, I was teaching art in this building, Donna Abernathy was here, and Amy Wooters, who is now an assistant principal here, was a student, and so a number of other central office staff too who were students here at the time. And so there are just lots and lots of good memories in this building. So that's my personal highlight.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. I'll piggyback on Ms. Lorr's recognition of the Spotswood ladies and the East Rock boys. You know, at one point, we didn't think there was going to be a basketball season, and some of the players from those teams came down here and advocated to Dr. Scheichel and this board that they could follow the protocol and thought that we could have a season, and we were able to move forward with some of the sports for the winter sports. So that was really tremendous, and to see those students go as far as they did this past weekend is just terrific. And the other thing is, I'd like to thank our Rockingham County personnel that have had to deal with the snow, our bus drivers, our custodial staff, our administrators. No, well, I would say no board member really likes snow days because it generates an incredible amount of feedback to us. I'm just going to leave it right there. And so we try to do what's best for the safety and security of our students and our teachers and our staff, but in order for us to also then get our schools back open, it requires a tremendous amount of work, more than a usual day. So I appreciate that work that's being put in to get our schools ready after a snow or an ice storm, and the ice storms are the worst, to get our students back in school. So thank you. Okay, board members, let's move into action items. We have our minutes from the last meeting. I need a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion regarding those minutes? Seeing none, please vote. Next up, I believe, is Ms. Mast. Is that correct, for the workers' compensation?
Chair Reed, members of the board, and Dr. Scheichel, it was brought to my attention recently by our workers' comp insurance company that school board members are actually not covered by workers' comp unless a resolution is passed. So before you this evening is the resolution for you to pass this evening that would then include you in our workers' comp coverage.
What members, you have the resolution before you, and I recommend approval of the resolution as presented.
Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the workers' compensation coverage for school board members. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation to adopt the resolution authorizing school board members' coverage as provided by the Workman's Compensation Act of the Commonwealth of Virginia as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lorr. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Thank you, Ms. Mast. 2021-2022 school calendar, Mr. Shiflett or Dr. Shiflett?
Larry.
Or Larry?
Larry's getting better.
Okay.
I know who that guy is. You say doctor, and I start looking around. I'm not, who is that? Chair Reed, members of the board, Dr. Scheichel, guests. At our previous school board meeting, my colleague, Dr. Alder, shared with you a draft calendar for the 21-22 school year, and we worked in collaboration with Harrisonburg City Schools on that calendar, trying to align our two calendars as much as possible. And I'm not going to get into the weeds of all of the bits and pieces of our calendar, but you have it, you've had a couple of weeks to look at it. There are 183 instructional days, and they would be what we'd consider a typical day, probably 8:15-ish to 3 o'clock, somewhere in that neighborhood. That sometimes varies from school to school. And there are 15 days designated for professional development, teacher work days, and parent conferences. And so I come to you this evening...
So, there were a number of readers who assumed that because we coordinated, that we would also start on the seventeenth. So, I do want to make that clear. We'll start school after the Rockingham County Fair. And I do recommend approval of the calendar, Dr. Shiflett presented to you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheikle. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty- Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the calendar as presented by Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Questions or discussion, board members?
Dr. Scheikle, and I know you don't have a crystal ball, and I know we're in the middle of COVID. What are the chances that we actually start on Monday, August 23rd?
Sixty-two point five percent.
That's awesome.
Right now, I will say this, we have had a number of conversations around what it would take to actually bring all students back into the building, right? We've talked about this from the very beginning, taking, you know, guidance from what happened in other countries, looking at what the CDC and VDH recommended. And in Virginia, there was, just a few weeks ago after Governor Northam's announcement about March fifteenth, you know, having schools give students an in-person learning opportunity. There were a lot of conversations about what the World Health Organization recommends, which is three-foot distancing. And so, some school divisions were thinking about that. However, last week, two weeks ago, CDC guidance was updated. And then, the state superintendent, in a call with all superintendents, said those school divisions that were trying to move to three feet need to reconsider that because of the new CDC guidance. And it's interesting that for a long time, you know, we talked about whether we could go to three feet, especially with additional mitigation in place that we have, like ventilation. And we even went so far to let the UE know that we might be interested in a pilot project where staff and students could self-test on a rapid test once a week and to increase attendance that way. But the reason for it is the spread of the variants from South Africa and the UK. So, to answer your question, kind of way that is supported by the public health research. And again, it can be a combination. In another area as well as we wish. And so, there may be combinations, you know, of mitigation strategies that will allow us to do that. Numbers are decreasing currently, so we were as high as almost 1,200 new cases per 100,000 for two weeks in the county just after, in early January. That number is now back down to 300. Not that that's a great number, but we're 100 away from being back in orange. And of course, with the vaccinations taking place and the daily vaccination number increasing, there's also the chance that maybe even for high school students, the vaccine may be available in the fall for elementary kids. The earliest is anticipated for early 2022. So, if we can add, for example, a testing process, vaccinations continue, and maybe the variants do not become the dominant strain, or the vaccines work well, then there are possible approaches to that. But I think, you know, making a call in March about what we expect it to look like would be premature. I would say that, you know, every day, we learn more about it. And as we find out, you know, what will be safe and what's permitted, we will certainly make every effort, again, within the public health guidelines, to bring all students back. Every educator, every administrator, every school board member knows that so many students do best when they are in these buildings with caring adults who can structure learning activities. And it's not because we don't want students here. There are simply guidelines we do need to follow, and we've been quite creative in, you know, adding strategies. And so, that's what we'll do, find the best combination of strategies that will allow us to bring as many kids back as possible. So, I'm hopeful that we begin next school year with all kids back. I just can't, you know, say there is a 60% chance because we simply don't know what's going to happen. So, the drop right now is really encouraging, but that also happened in Europe before the variants caused the fourth surge. So, we'll just have to keep our eyes on it and do what we've been doing, is follow the expert advice from state and national experts in the field.
Thank you. It's just really, the kids have been out of school, haven't had a five-day week. It'll be like a year and a half that they haven't had a five-day week. And we're going to go right back to a five-day week, and that really bothers me. However, they've missed so much school, we can't afford to lose one more day. So, this has really been a tough decision for me. So, thank you for all the time you've spent with me trying to help me on this. And thank you, Dr. Shiflett, for your work on this. Thank you to all the committee and everyone, and thanks just to everyone who's worked hard to get as many minutes as we can for our students. And I guess on, let me see here. On August 27th, the kids are going to be really grumpy, so we're going to have to work on that. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Dr. Scheikle, I have a question for you. We have received some feedback and emails regarding two things. One is some desire of teachers to have a four-day week with a Wednesday off, which would require quite a shuffle in our schedule and our hours in order for us to make the 990 hours. And also, there's been some concern in the community about us going back to the shortened school day discussion that we had about 18 months ago. My understanding in conversations with you is that we are not looking at any schedule changes for next year, but at least where we are right now. Is that correct?
So, schedule changes as they pertain to what was proposed as a pilot for this year. Yeah, so, when we developed that, of course, that was pre-COVID, and we worked, again, like through COVID, we worked with nationally-recognized cognitive science experts to talk about how you can structure a school day. But we're in a different position now. You know, we've had a year where students and families and educators, you know, have lost a lot of time that's normally used to engage in learning opportunities. And so, no, there's no plan to have a four-day week. It would require us, even to just meet the minimum hourly requirement for the year, which is 990, it would require a seven-hour school day for the other four days at least. And the shortened school day, I don't think this is the time for that when we can take advantage of using the time we have with students to really also focus on what's required before we focus on curriculum. So, there will be intensive need for students to have access to mental health services. There has to be some targeted assistance. It may even happen, you know, with Boys and Girls Club after school, you know, those kinds of things. And so, we've had conversations with administrators, and we've also, again, spoken to those who researched this at the national level. As you know, we're part of the Future Focus Schools Collaborative, where we're one of 14 school divisions in the country that are being considered to look at educational change and what best practice would dictate. But even in those meetings, you know, the conversation is, you know, that's not the right time right now. So, I know you've received those concerns, and I mean, our meetings, that's not what we are planning at this point.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Dr. Scheikle. I appreciate it. Any other questions, board members? Seeing none, please vote. The twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school calendar passes four zero. Thank you. Next is the Advanced Placement Environmental Science Textbook Committee. Ms. Stone?
Good evening again, board and guests. Due to the AP Board changing the AP Environmental Science Test beginning next year, our current textbook does not meet the requirements, and it's not going to be on next year's list for AP textbooks. So, we have, we're requesting to form an AP Textbook Adoption Committee. The committee is comprised of the four AP Environmental Science teachers in the county, as well as two parents and a student and myself.
I do recommend approval of the committee as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Scheikle. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the AP Environmental Science Textbook Adoption Committee. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move we approve the AP Environmental Science Textbook Adoption Committee as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Motion carries four zero. We're moving on to Online Curriculum Adoption Committee. Dr. Shiflett, Larry, again.
Chair Reed and members of the board, Dr. Scheikle. We, for over about the past 10 years, have been using an online curriculum program called Edgenuity. And sort of, I like to call it our Swiss Army knife. We use it for a little bit of everything. We use it for students in alternative education. We use it for summer school. We do it for credit recovery. We have students take AP courses through Edgenuity, so it's sort of like our go-to. And we have been approached by some other providers, asking if they could maybe partner with Rockingham County. And so, we just feel like after a number of years with Edgenuity, it's just time to take a look to see what else is out there. And so, we put together a committee. There's about 29 members. There's teachers, administrators, there's some parents. And we just want to look at, you know, what is out there and see if we want to continue our partnership with Edgenuity, or is there a better product for our students and our teachers? And so, I would like, you know, in accordance with our school board policy on curriculum approval, to have this committee approved to do the exploration of these programs, please.
I recommend approval of the Online Curriculum Adoption Committee as presented by Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you, Dr. Scheikle. School board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the Online Curriculum Adoption Committee. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the proposed list of committee members for this purpose.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Questions or discussions for Dr. Shiflett or Dr. Scheikle? So, this is for just our high schoolers, or is it middle also?
Sixth grade, six to 12 is what we would be exploring. That's currently where we use Edgenuity. Mostly high school, not as much in the middle school, but we do use it occasionally there.
Dr. Shiflett, can you tell us how many years we've been using Edgenuity?
It's been over 10 years we've been with Edgenuity. And again, there's no complaints, but at the same time, I want to make sure that we're not missing another viable product for a better price as well, so.
Any other questions, board members? All right. Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries four zero. Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. We look forward to hearing how that goes. Next is Mr. Perkins, who's a man of many talents tonight. Is that automatic up there now? He's just running up there?
That's right. It's going. Yeah. Chair Reed, board members, Dr. Scheikle. I bring three bid recommendations to you this evening. These bids are for Chromebook outright and lease purchases to refresh devices for elementary teachers and students in grades three through five. Fiscal year 2021, 22 funds will be used for these purchases. Just one note about these, we're going to be transitioning from a three-year to a four-year refresh. The reason we're doing that is so with the same budget, we can accommodate more devices in our lowest grades, also add more accidental damage coverage for students, and also be able to provide a more premium Chromebook for teachers. And so, the first bid that's before you was released on January 18th with bids, sealed bids due on February 12th. And before you are responses from bidders for 200 Lenovo 500E Chromebooks. And the recommendation is to award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, DHE Computer Systems LLC, in the amount of $87,136.
I recommend approval of the bid as presented by Mr. Perkins.
Board members, do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion for Mr. Perkins?
So, we'll start having them for four years. Where will the breaks be? Does that make sense? So, will a child get it in sixth grade, and then they'll get a new one in 10th grade, and then they'll return it as a senior?
That's right. It's a little bit different. At elementary school, students don't have the same device all the way through. But yes, as we transition forward, the break could be variable in terms of grade level when that change happens. But students would keep the same device then for a four-year period versus a three-year period. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? Seeing none, please cast your vote. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. The next bid before you was released on January 18th with bids, sealed bids due February 12th. And before you are responses from bidders for 2,410 Lenovo 500E Chromebooks. Those will be financed with four-year fair market value lease terms. And the recommendation is to award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Electronic Systems Incorporated, financed via First American Education Finance in the amount of $1,055,033.84.
Again, I recommend approval of the bid for the Chromebook lease as presented by Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Dr. Scheikle. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or discussion on this lease purchase? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. The final bid before you was also released on January 18th with sealed bids due February 12th. And before you are responses from bidders for 550 Lenovo C13 Yoga Chromebooks. And the recommendation is to award the contract to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, Electronic Systems Incorporated, in the amount of $519,491.50.
And I recommend approval of the outright purchase bid as presented by Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Dr. Scheikle. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the staff Chromebooks. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the recommendation of Dr. Scheikle for the outright purchase of the staff Chromebooks.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any other questions or discussions?
I would just like to say that as a school board member, I get a Chromebook as well for school board stuff. And I also have the opportunity to go into the classrooms and work with students. And having this device is so helpful when you're working with students. It's nice that we all have the same thing, and we can just pass them around, and everybody knows-
It's nice that we all have the same thing and we can just pass them around and everybody knows exactly which key, because it's all the same key. So I would like to thank you and your group for working so hard to provide such great devices. Also, we dropped the thing and it keeps working. I have children and one of them was missing a key, but it kept working. They're awesome. So thank you for all of your work on those.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Any other questions or discussion, Board members? Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries for zero. Okay, we're going to move into information items. Mr. Fitzgerald.
I'm going to try to do this with my glasses, Mr. Baker. I took some notes from you. Chair Reed, school board members, and Dr. Seichel, February is Career and Technical Education Month. And CTE is well-known for providing hands-on, real-life experiences that help our students develop in-demand, high-paying, marketable skills that propel them in careers, further education, and I think most importantly, life. In Rockingham County, we have six program areas in CTE to include agriculture, business, family and consumer sciences, marketing, technology, and trade and industrial education. Each program has a career and technical education student organization, which is co-curricular. And that's kind of important when you start thinking about clubs and activities, because co-curricular means that it's an essential, integral component of the curriculum. Now, tonight, we are very fortunate to have with us four of our student leaders that serve not only us here in Rockingham County, but also serve at the district, regional, and state level. Kendra Dodrell, who is an FCCLA state officer, is going to introduce the other three leaders and bring some greetings from the FCCLA. Kendra, let me wipe this off for you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and happy CTE Month. My name is Kendra Dodrell, and I'm a senior at Turner Ashby High School. I have been involved in career and technical education classes, as well as career and technical student organizations ever since middle school. I've learned so much over those past seven years, and I will continue to use that knowledge far into my future. This year, I'm proudly serving as the Virginia Career and Community Leaders of Americas, or FCCLA's State First Vice President. This has been an amazing opportunity, even through a difficult year, for me to use my leadership skills gained through my CTE classes and CTSOs. Here with us tonight are three other leaders who will introduce themselves and share a little bit about their time in their CTSO. I would like to welcome our FFA Representative, Austin Funk, to give some remarks about his time.
So good evening, everybody. I'm not going to do too much of a huge introduction. Some of you know me, some of you may know of me, or at least know my parents, because I've come from right here in Broadway. My name is Austin Funk. I'm serving as one of the four state vice presidents for the Future Farmers of America Organization for Virginia for the next school year. So basically, in short, what my job is, is that I am an unpaid intern and advocate for Virginia agriculture for the current school year, even though that looks a whole lot different this year. So basically, it's FFA Week. It started last week. We were supposed to go to the Appalachian area, so southwest of Virginia, but with the inclement weather, of course, that got canceled. But me and my team actually met up last night. We call each other the Brady Bunch, because whenever we have Zoom meetings, there's nine of us, and it's a perfect three-line square. So yes. It's a funny remark. So we actually met up in Blacksburg last night. We went to four schools today in Bottotack County, educating students about diversity. They actually, my team went to Lynchburg this afternoon, and I stayed behind to come back and speak to you guys this evening. And I'm going to meet up with them tomorrow in Fisherville, and we're going to work our way up to ID1 Corridor. We're meeting with Augusta County Schools tomorrow and Thursday. And we're going to end up our Friday afternoon in Frederick County. So that's just a little bit about me. Thank you, guys, for having us.
Representing TSA is Alexis Blankenship.
Hello, everyone. I'm Alexis Blankenship. I'm a junior at Turner Ashby High School, and I am the Regional President of Valley Region TSA. Thank you for this opportunity this evening. The Technology Student Association is a co-curricular organization for students and technology education courses. As the Regional President, I lead both the region and serve on the State Executive Council for Virginia. TSA promotes leadership development, technological literacy, and community service. And as the Regional President, I can attest to this. TSA, in TSA, we participate in a regional fall rally, a spring fair, a state conference, and a national conference. So we are involved all year. We would like, we appreciate the school board's support in providing for our organization and providing for participation in these events. Our conferences are all virtual this year, but we are keeping, we're going nonetheless. We are looking forward to our spring competitions, and we are very excited to hopefully be participating in person in the spring. Thank you.
And representing DECA is Hannah Mast.
Good evening, and thank you, Dr. Seichel and the Board. I'm Hannah Mast, and I am the District Seven President of DECA. DECA is a co-curricular organization that prepares emerging business leaders and entrepreneurs, and has been really significant in my high school career, preparing myself for future endeavors. So thank you for supporting DECA and other CTE organizations. Thank you.
Let's give those guys a round of applause, please. I think working with student leaders, like you just saw, is probably the best part of every CTE teacher's job. Jerry Ridgeway's here from Turner Ashby Tech Ed Teacher, and I think he'll testify to that. That's it. And I don't know if there's any other CTE teachers here I didn't see anymore. But thank you for being here too, Mr. Ridgeway, and all you do. Now, in recognition of CTE Month, though, we have a small present for you. And I did notice a minute ago that the only person I think that opened that is Dr. McQuilkin. But I should have put, "Do not open until Christmas"? I don't know. But anyway, in your box, you're going to find an assortment of jams, jellies, and apple butter. And each of these products illustrates exactly what CTE is all about. You see, if you think about those products, an agriculturalist cultivated the land and harvested the ingredients for the products. Family and Consumer Science graduates determined the correct recipes and the food safety standards set to ensure the high-quality, good-tasting foods that are canned properly. And marketing experts made sure that products are available and that the consumers are aware of each one of them. And technology engineers designed and developed production lines for each product's manufacturer. Business professionals also determined the price and managed inventories to be sure that supply meets demand. And then the TNI, trade and industrial experts, constructed the facilities appropriate to process and to market the products. You see, that jam, jelly, and apple butter embodies everything that CTE teaches and that the teachers teach their students daily. So on behalf of our 47 Rockingham County CTE teachers, 30 MTC CTE teachers, and literally thousands of CTE students, we really do thank each and every one of you for your support of career and technical education. Without you, it would be very difficult to get our job done. You make it easy. Thank you. You give our students, these students, the ones that just spoke, the opportunity to make a difference, you know, in our community and beyond. So thank you very much, and appreciate everything that you do for CTE.
Board members, any questions or comments for Mr. Fitzgerald or our students?
I just want to congratulate each student that spoke. This is, this was a little bit of an intimidating night, and I appreciate you guys coming out and talking to us. And I just want to say how very proud I am of all of our students. I also would like to point out that perhaps in honor of our character count student, who was a pig farmer, we might could have gotten some bacon and had the same results. But I appreciate the jelly, and thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for all that you do. I can't think of a better night to receive lifesavers. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks, Eric, and also to the students. I would have opened the box if Hannah, for example, would have put it there, but I saw you put it there. So I wasn't going to open it in front of the public and have a clown on a spring pop out, right? So, no, so many amazing things happened because of your work, Eric. And I know every time I have a chance to be at the FFA convention or at DECA States, I just marvel at what the students accomplish, right, with the right guidance. But it's their work, and you and your team create the environment where that's possible. So what a joy to be part of that. Thank you.
I echo this. Besides, aren't we one of the 100, aren't we among the 100 top agricultural counties in the entire United States? How about in Virginia? What are we, number one? Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgerald and Kendra, Austin, Alexis, and Hannah, thank you for sharing your time tonight, reminding us the importance of CTE and the having multiple channels for our students to succeed and also move on paths beyond their high school experience. So we appreciate that. I wish that there had, the crowd that was here early was still here to hear each of you talk and share information with us about your program. So hopefully, those people that are watching us via video have picked that information up. And if not, the video is always on the website. They can go back and take a look at it. So thank you for sharing your time with us tonight. The next information item is budget planning. Ms. Mast?
Members of the Board, Chair Reed and Dr. Seichel, tonight I would like to give you a brief update on the budget. I was hoping to show the House and Senate version of revenue, but unfortunately, that has not been released yet. As you will recall, the governor's budget gave us approximately $1.2 million in additional dollars. However, I can give you an update on some of our federal funds. We have been working on ways to spend the additional $4.8 million we received in CARES funding. We have two years to spend this money. Most likely, we will spend this money on technology needs, software needs, and our mental health initiative, which we call Tiered Systems of Support. We may also do some upgrades on our ventilation systems, as all of those things that I mentioned qualify to be used under the CARES funds. We will also be receiving an additional $500,000 in Title I revenue. We are reviewing our reading needs in the division to see if we should use these additional funds in our traditional way with reading, or perhaps we would use these funds for other qualifying areas, such as additional EL teachers. We have also been reviewing our personnel requests that we've received. We have prioritized them, and we are also reviewing our teacher-to-student ratios to see where we have any enrollment issues that need to be addressed. I'd be happy to answer any other questions you may have regarding the budget process.
Board members, do you have any questions for Ms. Mast? Ms. Mast, thank you for your time and for that report. We appreciate it. Board members, you also have your attendance reports for December 2020 and January 2021 in your folders. We'll move on to other business, and we will start with Ms. Lauer.
I don't think I have any questions, so I'm going to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Dr. McQuilkin?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. Today is February 22nd, and it happens to be the exact date of George Washington's birthday, the father of our country. And I can't think of a more democratic way to celebrate it than our meeting this evening.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Breeden?
Thank you, Ms. Reed.
Citizens of Rockingham County have been awakened by this unfortunate set of circumstances. And I hope that's true. I hope that we have been awakened to the need for more civil discourse, for being able to accept those who do not agree with us in a more positive way. I sincerely, sincerely hope that. But that has to work. I'm sorry that Mr. Cross has left. But I would just mention that he posted on his social media mentions on the school board, which I took to imply that there were currently none there. Any decision that I make with regards to public education is fair game for criticism and for question. My relationship with my God is known only by me. The God that I worship will be the judge, and no man will be the judge. So we have to start in all directions, on a more civil discourse, respecting one another, treating each other in a way that we would want to be treated. And Mr. Cross, I mean this sincerely. I forgive you, and God bless you too.
Thank you, Mr. Breeden. Dr. Seichel?
I'll only say that respectful dialogue served us really well last year during some difficult conversations. And I got a call today from one of the members of the Keep Lees Open group, and I always think back to what we talked about in those conversations. We made a proposal that was very difficult at the stomach, but all the conversations remained civil and respectful. And I think that made those conversations lead to positive results. So I can only keep thanking that group for modeling the way.
Thank you, Dr. Seichel. Thank you to all of you for being here with us this evening. The weather wasn't great this morning. It was much better this afternoon. Many thanks to everybody who drove out here to Hilliard, for our students who came out here and their families that came out here, and also to all of those people that we recognize. We look forward to, our next meeting will be, I believe, in the county offices again. And then we'll be back out in the schools for more recognitions. Please, those of you that are still here, accept my challenge to help us recognize more teachers and staff here in Rockingham County. We hope that you have a safe journey home, and the rest of your week is a good one. Snow-free and ice-free. I'm sure our Bus and Transportation Director will appreciate that. So no early morning phone calls. So thank you. We have reason, Board members, to go into closed session. Can we have a motion to enter that closed meeting?
I move that the Board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, A1 Personnel, Specific Public Officers, Appointees, or Employees for the Purpose of Considering Such Individuals' Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Salary, or Resignation.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion, Board members? Seeing none, please... Seeing none, please vote. Motion carries. We're in closed session. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.